internal community roads all measuring three hundred and one kilometers are at various stages of construction. These roads, which are largely being constructed by reputable friends, are designed to last at least twenty years. Some of these roads are the twenty-six point four kilometer Amanse Ndukwenu Awa Ufuma Road, the twenty-six kilometers Amanse Ebenebe Ubenu Ubene Obofemi Le Road. Many roads in Ubuku, Oka Township Roads, the flood control at Yogidi Ubunike section of Onishenugu Old Road, dredging of Umili John River, called that the silting and widening of the water channel, the Abaka Basilica Road Onicha, the second phase of Umeyatanam Nzam with bridges and culverts. Others include the Ogunese Neui Hotel Road, Ifitogwari Road, also notable are the upcoming strategic Ikuulobia flyover aimed at decongesting the gridlocks in that axis. Isofa Roads and flood channel intervention at Isofa section of Ikuulobia Nobi Road, special intervention at Chisco Park Onicha, intervention at inland doors axis of Mbo Omoji Road, and special intervention at Amanse section of the express and old roads on Onishenugu Road. The government is also intervening in many called erosion control locations as exemplified in Ebenebe Neui South Local Government Area. The ongoing revolution in the road infrastructure across the state readily provoked a spontaneous inquiry of a concerned citizen who assuming the role of an independent project monitor undertook to measure the quality and progression of work from Amanse to Ufuma and from Amanse to Obofemi Le. He does this at intervals as herein indicated. Greetings, Mr. Governor. I made my second site inspection on the Ufuma to Amanse Ebenebe to Obofemi Le Roads under construction today, the twelfth of March twenty twenty-three. From Ufuma, asphaltin, which was at our at distance of four point seven kilometers last time I visited, has now reached Ndukwenu covering eight point three kilometers. Again, from Amanse End, asphaltin has covered four point nine kilometers. At the time of my visit, asphaltin was seriously on in the Amanse End. Serious work is really going on at the drainage, grading, filling up, and blinding with bitumen. The work is up to seventy percent completed. From Obofemi Le End, grading to remove the unwanted topsoil and to fill with pure red soil has almost reached the Obofemi Le T junction, covering a distance of about six point five kilometers. The stone base, which was three point eight kilometers last time, has gone up to five point six kilometers. Two culvert slash semi bridges are under construction and two others have been completed. The terrain is a very difficult one, but the construction company is indeed at it. From the Ebenebe End, they are only working on the drainage. Congratulations. This is indeed dividends of democracy, eye-marked and ear-marked. Kudos to God be the glory. Bishop Esu Kavu. The Soludo Administration has achieved so much in providing cost-effective and sustainable power and water supplies. Its target of giving Indianabra more environment-friendly power and water facilities is demonstrated in the deployment of solar powered streetlights in the urban and rural settings. It is also successfully collaborating with Enugu Electricity Distribution Company, EEDC, to ensure regular power supply in the state. In the water sector, the administration partnered with UNICEF in rehabilitating about a hundred boreholes in the seven-floor drainage local government areas in twenty twenty-two. The Soludo Administration is determined to transform the transport sector in the state. It has progressively funded the ongoing work at the Anambra International Cargo Airport and is revamping water transportation by refurbishing boats and procurement of water buses. In addition, it will construct ultra-modern mega bus terminals in Onicha, Oka, Ikuulobia, and Neui, and introduce air train system at Onicha Axis. The Anambra Government has established the Anambra State Geographic Information System, ANAGIS, to facilitate effective land administration that guarantees issuance of certificates of occupancy within three weeks of its request. One of the areas Governor Soludo's administration has boldly challenged the old order is on the issue of tax. With the dwindling receipts from Federation account against the governor's development agenda for Anambra, it became obvious that things needed to be done differently to raise the revenue generation profile of the state. The government embarked on public enlightenment on the necessity for Indianabra to embrace tax payment culture as an impetus for holding government accountable for the common good of the people. The administration also introduced the free medical health insurance services for commercial transport operators. The Soludo Administration has ensured that Anambra State continues to soar higher in the education sector. The administration dutifully employed five thousand teachers to bridge the gap created by many years of teachers' retirement without government employing those to fill the gap. This exercise was transparently done to ensure that merit only informed the choice of the teachers employed. The administration granted scholarship to one hundred and seven indigenous students in the hard-to-reach disadvantaged parts of the state. As a result, Anambra State teachers, students, and schools are already winning all sorts of laurels for optimal performance in the eighteen months of Soludo's administration. The Soludo Administration has entered the era of government hospitals without doctors and other relevant medical personnel by recruiting over three hundred medical personnel to ensure proper running of government hospitals. These include medical officers and consultants, pharmacists, medical laboratory scientists, radiographers, and nurses. The general hospitals at Umweiri, Enuguku, and Ikuulobia are undergoing major upgrade. The state now has thirty centers for clinical center screening and treatment. The administration partners with communities in driving vital health projects. This partnership is exemplified in the eye care center at Nise. A few months in the life of the administration, the government distributed three point eight million treated mosquito nets. It has established the following: a fully functional endoscopy unit at General Hospital Onicha, dental units at Umweiri, Enuguku, and Ikuulobia General Hospitals, and the medical oxygen production plant at General Hospital Onicha. Broken its talk of producing youth millionaires in Anambra State, the Soludo Administration has its innovative One Youth Two Skills Scheme successfully onstream. The scheme seeks to provide vocational and entrepreneurial skills to Anambra youths as an improved version of the popular Mwa Boy phenomenon in Igbo's business circle. The program aims to produce one hundred and thirty thousand private sector jobs and one thousand youth millionaires per annum. As one to Governor Soludo's target of fostering and promoting digital and other innovative skills that will enable global marketability amongst Indianabra, his administration recently launched the Solution Innovation District, SID, with a memorandum of understanding to train twenty thousand Anambra youths in digital skills signed with Microsoft and Woodlab Foundation. On governance, rule of law, and value system, this administration broke the jinx that stalled work in the government house started thirty-one years ago. Renewed construction of the massive and impressive government house complex with numerous structures, two point two two linear kilometer perimeter fence, water supplies, green areas, et cetera, is steadily going on. The project will be delivered in eighteen months. The administration's interest in maintaining an efficient workforce is evident in many trainings it has availed workers in various ministries and agencies of government. The government's technology everywhere and everything technology is aggressively driven by its ICT agency, which is progressively digitizing government agencies' operating procedures and providing digital solutions such as website creation and other technical assistance. To incentivize workers of the state, Governor Jukuma Soludo, without prior public agitation, announced a ten percent increase of worker salary. This was in December twenty twenty-two, and it took effect from January twenty twenty-three. The government has through the Minister of Local Government and Chief Tennessee Matters rebuilt Neui South and Aguata Local Government Headquarters that were bombed down by criminals. In just a little over one year, the Soludo Administration has been able to reconcile groups in many communities who had been in deep conflicts over Chief Tennessee, Igwe, or President General Matters. It has successfully superintended over the conduct of over fifty-four town union elections. This has made room for greater peace in the state. Recognizing environment as an existential element in Anambra, Governor Soludo's first public assignment as Anambra State Governor was confronting the Ubuku Axis of the Onisha Urban Flum neighborhoods. This was just a day after his inauguration. Since then, he has increasingly demonstrated keen interest in urban renewal. He introduced tree planting policy, instructed Indianabra to make adequate provision of trees and greenery in their homes. Over five thousand seedlings of economic trees have been prepared in partnership with the federal government for the reforestation of forest reserves at Mamu Ebenebe and Ossamala. The administration has worked out a sustainable scheme for proper waste management, ranging from waste collection to waste to well shadow. Confronted with a devastating flooding that submerged over half of Anambra habitation in the early months of the administration last year, the government succeeded in managing the multi-dimensional crisis of displacement of hundreds of thousands of families, huge material losses and loss of lives, destruction of private homes, farmlands, schools, hospitals, churches, markets, roads, and bridges. The government sustained that displaced families and towns at internally displaced persons camps by providing shelter, food, drugs, and essential social amenities through the crises. It facilitated their return to their homes while rebuilding the public infrastructure like roads and markets that were damaged by the flood. Apart from the easily identifiable things the administration has achieved these turbulent eighteen months, it is pertinent to note that the greater part of what the Soludo Administration has achieved thus far are in the area of sound policy designs whose vast yields will keep unfolding with passing time. Forward, the administration has a clear roadmap on how to attain its dream Anambra State. It targets deepening the security architecture of the state and partnering with the judiciary and legislature for reviewing of laws and speedy dispensation of justice. It aims at constructing at least one hundred kilometer more roads and establishing industrial cities and export processing zones, export emporium, and the largest shopping mall in Africa with warehouses. It envisions urban regeneration and modernization of major cities like Ikuulobia, Oka, Onicha, Neui, et cetera. The administration is determined to establish intercity and intra-city transport system that includes water and skytrain while continuing work at the state airport. It will provide twenty-four hours electricity supply to the four major cities of Onicha, Oka, Neui, and Ikuulobia at least. It will build a new Oka City and the Oka Fund City along with the urban water schemes at Oka, Onicha, and Ubisi. It will heighten the economy potentials of the entertainment industry in the state by building Aguru Leisure Park Phase One, Family Fund Center, and Anambra Country Club, all in Oka, will be bettered in the next thirteen months of this administration. The government will democratize digital skills and upgrade infrastructure in schools and hospitals. Specialized teachers will be recruited and world-based cooperative intervention program will be launched. There'll be continuous youth skill enhancement and empowerment. Sports economy will be mainstream, just as development of the Solution Innovation District, while targeting to provide the cleanest environment and the best-planned cities in Nigeria. The doctrine of technology everywhere and everything technology will be deeply entrenched in the consciousness of Indianabra. In all of these, the only thing the state government asks from Indianabra and other public-spirited persons and organizations is partnership that will facilitate a seamless actualization of the envisioned Anambra State. An assessment of the volume and distribution of tangible and intangible achievements of the Soludo Administration these past months and the anticipated convergence of the animus goodwill that Governor Soludo commands in the coming months leave Indianabra and the global community with great expectation of what Anambra State will be when the governor's time in office is done.
Mr. Chairman. None, and thank you very much. Distinguished Senators, members of the House of Reps, oh, former deputy governor, members of the House of Reps, former and current, oh, Oman eighty-eighty, former governor of Anambra State, former governor of Anambra State. He began the road revolution in Anambra. As governor, he is one senate. And the bishop, while delivering his family. So I just want to give this testimony, thank you very much, Your Excellency. Kainan esalefa and game our chairman, nte? Of course, ekusiifa nine, ntefu my wife, the wife of the governor of Anambra State. Otherwise, eh, na naluwago na batigapuan ilo imana, kaga, nekene ma. Ekene? Farme vele anankuesele make a presentation. Ogai me one year anniversary. I'm a representation. This is the month of July. Karapi jave, ikeneve, nukuavu my sister, distinguished senator, ekuunife, and all. They not just is a co-opted Anambra man, prof. Ositobu, prof. Amasupya, ahah, ahah, but no, no, Anambra is, Anambra and our co-opted members, it must some of us who grew central state. Sometimes. I am a Jidono, sheefo. Now Lagos, ogai manke Lagos, it was quite a very long one. I nogi deleba anak almost midnight. I wear. Three AM. Manai ge be a chafo, chafo. Mano oboro no dia, abuja. Mke sisi, ai melia. Security Trust Fund Meeting for Fund Reg. Ogai. Nde Anambra. Now. I beg to. Onuwa maya interview and graciously employed me and my deputy to be the chief servant. Where say anytime I meet towa, ngane kenekwa no no for employing us. Thank you very much. This guy. I know, know. Ayana, no bulgo to one minute, kapakula. Why I would if I be out, but, ahah. So, this. Ai meliana Lagos, when I make way, I poli. Makoga. And the purpose they do. Mke mbo, bonai. I know it was. Guys here, me. When whatever. That's number one, purpose. No. Boi juwe. No. Mo na. Mata no. Of. No, I. With them, the Nigeria. Where stronger. Nigeria. Ekwenye mniya, ine buanya, manisimo, manifei, oh, eagle, oh, ifa de na the Nigeria's coat of arms. You can write a whole lot about the eagle, eagle personality and all of that, but eagle was symbol if a coat of arms. So here in Nigeria, he look where. Ekwenye. Yeah. All son the back. Ne po wuna bo, ebene na. Mana alawu. Alawu. Manai na chi kowalonde ba ine lutende ba ino bi alijemona. Mata nandi bina befa will never, your host will never respect you, mobo ni ngwero, a livable and prosperous homeland. Onanya no ngware ebesi, eba swa you wa sayi, na be. Mata no. So, no anya keldia dema, I nogi de, and okue. No, well, ebasi. Now the Jews, why they claim to be the African Jews, or yeah, goat. We be near a corduroy, obole neki fege, man ono, ona we malefe. Ofu ke se a ufu obole, kazo se a ibole bo, kazo se ubole to. Wa sefa, ona ekwe de nakoma, ona ato, si na nke melondio. Manai. After. Ogai suffered the Holocaust, the persecution of the Jews. After. To build. That will be as prosperous as any. In the. Eba. Like. So na fa, ba swa you wa Anambam. What? Na. Them. The Jew. Wait on, I semi-desert. To become one of the most prosperous spots of anywhere else in the world today. Or take the determination, or take the resolve, or take the homeland consciousness that a people decided to take their destiny in their hands. Where decide there, na anya, eh, obuwanne, adikoka, obuwanne, tony wo ye, eh, ke, man swa, eh, karapiya, eh, ozemena. Also, no nyacha se mo shot opo, mobi amono, o nyacha ya, bo mo na London, basionere, kaya dwa ya manan, ne, odi no tuani cha, bo. Okua, no nyacha se a shot opa ya, mobi ya mo. So, vi vadi biata tabo, nde ba eh, like, we be near a ku bole. Ke mai, o melon the Jew wants, for decide there to build their home. Any Jew, eba swa you were anywhere in the world, ona Israel, ona beer. When I join the ba eh, owoke dumbe, nde ba ige kuné, walose, a pasuwa you were, in Anambam. But he get build a new bay. Like. Eh, gua go, o nyacha se a shot opa ya, mobi ya mo, ya, fe na London, basionere, yes. You know, to Nigeria, I want to suggest, and I want to say it very funny. You know, to Nigeria, they, I want to suggest, and I want to say it very funny. I'm not a commander in there, in there, eh, the co is a leave a name, nah, nah, grandina. Anna ma sayana ba ino, but. When I say, if I name you, if I, I'll give you, I'll give you, um. Ca if I, I'll cut him, no. At all. Chuku, nonne niguwe. I'm a very spiritual about this. And I'll tell you why, my motivation for applying for this job. Now, chuku nonne niguwe. Everon mistake, imai ndibo. Omeron mistake, imai in the number. Oh, che cha ebene, oh, my, I owny Tanzania, my, I owny Jamaica, my, I. Or American, or this, or that, of lebene na, where decide of all. Eh, ba, ke ga, where, more I take it seriously, now they pop. Now each of. Are do each of us, but, ke di. To leave that place better than you met it. Wouldn't goes in. Emera. Okay. What? Mano. The boss. Manai. In a bed, oh, my, he was. Oh, boy. Manai. So, no, so. Moon. Eh. I've thought about, why the whole. Or the why. Okay, Melo, this. Well, what data? Why? Uh. And no. Man. Man, the central message, and I. Bonna. And I. And that is a bed. Get. Ona. Where questions, doing well. Or the kunka for. What, okay, dear? I will give another, so, oh, you have questions, where suggestions, oh, game eh, and so on, or that way. Maniva. Like I said, obialidi muna. And no, no, obonamwe leave for a guy eh, me, oh, no, no, we leave for a lot. To make our number livable and prosperous. Our mission, bona, they are the clear, clear, the clear model. I bond their number, and I will even in no gay where, Ijima number, of all the number one destination, rather than being a departure lounge. Now the message, Icho, eh, eh, person, and everybody. Man, they are not ever, oh, no, obonamwe leave for a game eh. Our liaison offices, now Lagos, and Abuja here will be reworking them, I'm well liaison office, then, um, uh, Asokro. Are supposed to be residents, rentably out, but I in a fair dozen here, I will go to a liaison office and residence. More again, eh, or they a functional office, that once in a while, more a guy, eh, 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 open there. Oh, when naturely for governor, when naturely either one or two days, a very office, another eh, ba, oh, yeah, totally for obia for eh, ba, was here. We're going to do it. The same thing in Lagos. I know they, from time to time, they will open there, two days, not in my back, chief on Saro, be office, it's always from eh, eh, I have. The same thing, because the. Strategic partnerships, and I am glad now, oh, the chairman, now in eh, Guoku, chairman of this event, uh, only body in eh, the Guoku, Okutesseli about strategic partnerships. January last year. And when, I think dinner, with all the members of the National Assembly. Every Chukuzo, you were there, and, uh, my distinguished Senator, Young, was also there. We had dinner in my house, here, in Abuja. And also, kind of, another. I'm proposing that another one, would at which should be having similar meetings, literally, at least maybe, maybe, uh, every quarter or minimum, uh, three times in a year, and especially as in pre. Because, and I'm repeating what I said to the National Assembly the day we met. If I. If I, if I would take two hands to clap. And I. Ball, in a field. And I also said it on the parties, but I'm a inaugurate the State House of Assembly. Political party, you know, the relevant, Kavoki, where's our election? After the election, we all have one project, Project Anambra. And there is only one ball in the field, and the goal of everybody, both to score the goal. And now for me, people remember National Assembly, there is only one. There is only. And that. Now, federal. Really, or no, fifteen trillion, twenty trillion, whatever trillion, trillion, other mapo, be, not but trillion, not but trillion. If ever you are on concern. Or. How? Ebonata Anambra. That is it, that's part of the strategic partnership, and I want. The senators and mem- and the members of the House of Reps. Let's walk. Because we have only one agenda, onuwa biya la Abuja, I see now, I can't buy a ball. Good. When, get. Now. I'm. I'm. I pass. Here. In the back. But. Than moving emotion to get. To happen. And we are going to work towards that. I want. Um, oh, where eh, road. We have a project ongoing there. Already, as we speak, the. Um, a bar, you know, that exists, we just. They go, uh, as well, then. The pipeline, I just. I was there. Cancel meeting, and I. Spending close to twenty billion on federal roads, now number. And that shouldn't be, we got to change the narrative, we have to change the way that it works. And I think, working with the members of the National Assembly, and especially. My call. Other. In the. Minister of War. Those roads. I am. Because. They go, they can't find one, it's not appropriated, the whole budget. For the entire country. So he can speak from here to Jericho. Now, if you go, but now, where I go. Meanwhile, every then, the mother, yeah, 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 sell here, na photo, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, ke ke na abanozo, man, ke o federal, um, na state. If I'm a salute, no, za, joy. Where did I, the neba, okay, nah, nah, yeah. My call, boss, oh, set yellow. We wait up, but I know, I know, yeah, look over. Oh, where on town, where on came, well, mki jijula, can you go, now, bro, back home. And I will address one or two, three things. I settle out in terms of making this state, gobbo, the most livable and prosperous state. The value, yeah, gen. Yeah. The if I, eh, eh, kobo. Ke te twa, I guess, my number, gobbo, the destination, rather than a departure lounge. So far, oh, yeah, patego, oh, yeah, what if I, oh, what, what, yeah, be Lagos, oh, yeah, Abuja, oh, yeah, what, 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 what? How do we change that narrative? For me and the government, onuha yala, ina number. We are determined to change that narrative. And we are putting in everything that we can, walking twenty-four hours every day, to change that narrative. And I want to assure you, over the next two years plus, Makatini, if onuha yala, inolwa, two years plus, now, um. About thirty months, girl, about thirty months, eh, ba. Uh, okay, so thirty-three. Okay, thirty, come for a delay, eh. But over those thirty months, I will assure you, by our commitment and the program I G, and if I, now, every day, twenty-four by seven, by that thirty-eight month, was all game, this contract I signo, now, I got, if I did, they, if you, and I have. I am a choice. We have no excuses. Yes, our chairman mentioned it, Ogaibata, oh, we go, but they. Nine of the local governments were under siege, literally, completely taken over by the criminals, including my own. Oga in a make campaign, most of us could not campaign freely in the southern zone. Now, my own local government, was I may campaign, eh, buh, fa buh, and eh, buh, oh, be, oh, was here. But I didn't know we, there were more policemen, now the venue, than in the bay, for rally. Eh, here la, eh, je ro di, eh, je cha, was here, eh, eh, if eh, buh, was I see everywhere. The same thing, all the local governments in the south, plus Obaru, were completely taken over by these hoodlums. But steadily, steadily, as day follows night, my, they are gang masters, my, they are leaders, and no, Dumo, Duva, Maokito, ma, Udele, Maosia, Maosere, and so on and so forth, they are gone, and they are gone for good. They will not be able to have that kind of stronghold again, anywhere in Anambra. If I can, eh, when say, if I, eh, where was some kind of, I no get a one rogue, if I, if I, if I, what a loss, so. But of whom, at that form of organized form, firm was the capacity to do that, I can assure you of that. Don't forget, one of the candidates, I in a phase of election, now, the candidate of Labour Party, was kidnapped while he was campaigning. And he has not returned. He was a candidate, we were all candidates campaigning, and he was on a campaign trip, and he was taken, and nobody saw him again. We've been on the trail for that since I assumed office, but I can tell you, if one thing we now know, now number, and those criminals know it. No, obore, eh, my, is all labi, see, oh, ke di, if so, name, I see, I, oh, la. Okay, man, you might like, eh, but the, yeah, my, eh, yeah, that's easy, but no, again, eh, messily, afterwards. Farmer go debiya na anambra, be ya imasiaya, ena ana, sileke, ayen ngwetero nizu, ayen ngwetegi na onwa. That is it. One Odumo Odu, Odumo that was terrorizing Imo, the whole of Alu Zone, and so on. Did they have a battle on Anambra? With his whole team, with rocket launchers, with AK-40, the Bukalofifa, was all battle on Anambra, or the Anambra Vigilante Strike Force that brought him and his team down, and so on. So, but we are going to the death level now. Mwai batala, onuke achopotana, most communities, their vigilante teams were totally compromised and taken over by these guys. And so, I, we couldn't operate with those ones because we didn't trust them. So I bid up with the State Strike Force. Now that we can trust that team now, and those people man. Farmer. Nandia. Monday ma efe famama, or Makalia efe famama. Now with that group gone, we're going to the local government. And where the next phase I get out to drill down to the communities, community vigilantes. And we're going to be strengthening this in the coming weeks and months. We are determined, the moment we put this in place, over the coming weeks, we're going to focus very aggressively on opening up Anambra and ending the sit at home once and for all. We're going to end it. We're going to end it. Because what had happened, Obuna, had a son, na chuefi, this is a ton, na chonde na chuefi. But now, I think the reverse is becoming the case. On our infrastructure and economic transformation, quite a bit of it has been led out here. It's a huge agenda. Anambra where road crisis, infrastructure crisis, ogayibata. And we promised in that number that we are going to declare a state of emergency on roads. And yes, that we have declared. And only three hundred and one kilometers, that didn't include the contracts that we just awarded recently. And we are still coming, and we are still coming, and we are still coming. They promised hundred kilometer extra, we're going to be doing much, much more than that. And because our target is to be able to hit at least five hundred or so kilometers of road. And we've declared this and moving very massively in all the local governments of Anambra State simultaneously and delivering quality roads. At least onwa, egosi guy, not a possible yellow quality road. Makona we massi, eh, nanka dekan ken giga. Makona ke di, now the benchmark, eh, good quality road, na anambra. Uh-huh, nan ken giga kadea? But onwa, ifa ena lookita, bonkega, ano kale ken giga. But now, oh, only the biafa, ah, they are nanka olala, bo. Uh-huh, but if I nan ken di melame, ayamutago from Mke, now Jozika elo, Mke mekene, kega topu na kia. But thank you very much for laying that foundation. Makongo ndeana law two years or wash it off. We've declared that emergency, but in all the other sectors, be it agriculture, be it in industrialization, you've seen something on your tables. Omalefono fuga maka pharmaceutical industrial park. They have a drug market that will be the largest in West Africa, or is it in Africa? The pharmaceutical park that will be in Oboji. And we are also, we have acquired hectares of land, thousands of hectares of land. Eh, baga alo the next industrial cities. Two main cities, or three of them, will be emerging very soon. Three. That is about three point five hectares, or three thousand five hundred hectares of funds on whoever. Akuia? Uh-huh, ogamaka three thousand five hundred that is going to the what is called the New Oka. And then, we're targeting about seven thousand hectares for the industrial city, but already three thousand five hundred in the bank. We've already acquired a hundred and six hectares of land, or what I call the UU cities. The Ukulu, um, axes, where each of them has given us fifty-three hectares of land. That's where we're going to be having the export processing zone, the Export Emporium, and with an agenda to have the Africa's largest shopping mall. Yes. That will be in that axis, as it were. And then the New Oka and the even I can, Oka will be a destination. Oka will be a true capital. Oka ma was just a glorified village. And I bid only by signaling that, for the first time in thirty-two years of the creation of Anambra State, that there will be a governor's lodge and a government house in Oka. And by early next year, probably before March next year, we'll be able to move into the new governor's lodge and the new government house. We're going in all facets, but I will tell you something very important, because many of us here, and I say, not ono, not ono, not ono. Eh, I told me may invest, ke debengi may invest, we are taking two, three steps. First, we are acquiring the lands and putting them in our land bank. So if ya chong, kege, marveling, and we plan it all out. Eh, baga alo estates. So far, we just signed up, how many, how many persons have, how many estate developers have we signed? Seven. Seven. We have signed on seven estate developers, new estate developers, and work is ongoing. Anambra ga diche. And what I'm trying to say to you, Makandina, I told to make investment, when we acquire these lands, Ihiyalo bia, ayamalungke choli me. Once we approve our funds, because some naga say, na chole lunga, see, I go, see, they have a hundred hectares. Ifo na chobe, one year, yes, you're four, ova leje de. Ne che, omwe belo ke goba nka, bo, owa na leva ne. Ah, also, ne che, omwe ne na mayva, nopepe ne. And, ne ma, ne ma, no, 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 the game, ifa abu the game. So na omuka ma ifa, ifa na mayva. Open that also, na fana chuan, eh, na chuan, oh, negative fifty hectares. In what ona, land the Banambras own platinum, obro the diamond, no platinum, ka land, ana, Anambra. Because Anaim wepempe, our land area, they encumbered by flooding and by erosion. Aim was second smallest landmass after Lagos. But Lagos is expanding by reclaiming the lagoons and the Atlantic. Anambra is shrinking because of golly erosion and flooding. So the little forum, Ihiyalo bia, abaya, it ready to invest, we give you. But no, bone, eh, yege, yege, hobu diye, je de. I got a lot of here, you yet ready. Bo, well, if I never, yes, I get what I need, you yet ready to develop. Come when they know, know, they specialize in. Ne wakati, eh, wakati oye me offense, rapia. Ne che ko, me appreciate. Mba, that era is gone. Anambra, this is the time to come in. You are future, yesterday and today, bo here and elsewhere, Bonna. Tomorrow, the day after tomorrow and the future belongs down there. And I will tell you this, the next axis of prosperity that will be sustainable over the long term, wumba da ba ya. Omende nekwenisi, uh, for, for na, na, that even ne. The next axis of prosperity, in a Lagos, etu ade. I'm more wonderful about cities that will submerge or something, something under. Wonderful, yeah. The analysis of the cities of the world and the Bevanaga, and so on. With the Second Niger Bridge completed, and with the future, it near the rail lines. And I want to pray and hope that the governors, aim we kita, and the southeast, that is quite an upbeat, I'm quite upbeat about tomorrow of the southeast, where the crop of governors, aim wetekita, that if we collaborate together and coordinate together, the southeast will sing a new song. The southeast will sing a new song. That would be a stampede. Nde mea kita, nde na bata kita. And I want to say this. I na say be bia to invest in the southeast, it's not, omwe roji de me favor. If ya may invest, eh, they may invest for me. They're not doing me a favor. Investing there is in your own best interest. Over the next two decades, three decades, four decades, being there, nde mea today, bundigiri, what is called the first mover advantages. Nde kega abia zila ta. Ya na abia zila, na baga no with the, nde, nodugo, the one, bo lo, no de. Odeka, nde biala Abuja is. Bo, nde biala Abuja, je golose ana, mebedina na manam, uh, Maitama, Sokoro, ma, Usetumbe, fabo sofia. Uh, nde na abia zita ta, nde na sena baba ofia mba. When I abia zila, twenty years later, onu ma ife men. Etu akoge, se de na ba e. Etu akoge, simena ba e. And so, when I say it, I'm saying, come. Kai doziebe chineke nyelai, ah, na ngibanka ko nyelai, anadenso. Kai dozieye, kan dihozo mekene, ya ba na ba e. In your own best interest. Omwe roji de me nyelo. Mume, you bunye gue ba o. Apa Anambra? Eh, bunye gum. Eh, gata go? Uh-huh. Alonome, bemne nugu, asonyi bu, I'm as well, put onyibu. Alon bem in the nineties, ne nugu, ne ba kangebi, retire, die. And I built it as such. Nugu has remained, had remained my first primary residence in Nigeria. I'm, I'm a say, proudly can say, no more, the first onyibu, amoromako nyozo, who held such a high-profile office as being governor of Central Bank, finish here, makoro kana bemne nugu. Abuja ba, bu guesthouse. Obosia, I got fedala, alaro eba, we say, no rea, ga, ga. Ena po, ena juo, omwe omwe lefe, nchefu. But na Anambra, ana gum, eh, na me na naluno, so ana luwa gum. And I finish here, agama obonya, gallo se a governor, maybe, mononwa, amorozima, eh, bu mozo, ma, ma, eh, bu yozo. Etu obuga mozo, lawa governor, maybe, obulu mozo, we bo ya. But I'm not say a governor, maybe na Anambra. Maybe na Anambra. Because that is the place to be. That is the place to be. And I na fe dozio ka, and even Maloya, ifa ena lo no, ifa ena lo eba bo, and Maloya with a view, ne ba kangebi. Yes. So in my self-interest, for it to be what it should be. And that is the Z light well I mean. By name, if empowerment and so on and so forth, I could take you through a whole lot of things we are doing. But just recently, about two, three weeks ago, we finished distributing six hundred and seventy thousand seedlings, coconut and palm. And you know the economics of that? We're distributing this about hundred and forty thousand households. And the agenda, Bona, my commissioner for agriculture, a foster, Sir Medical Doctor Tom Farmer. Yes. Sir Medical Doctor, who has taken on the farm, I mean agriculture as his occupation. He's our commissioner. He has been our teacher. Taught us the economics of this palm and coconut. That a poor household, omwe te, the five of them, ainya for this year. In the next four years, when it starts fruiting and as it's going on, we'll be making a minimum of what? About one, a minimum of one point two million at current prices, at the prices today. God knows what the prices and so on will be there. A poor household, that for twenty thousand, I for ten thousand today, earning an average of hundred thousand naira a month or so. Next year, we are going to replicate and give to each one of those people I hear, another five, to make it ten. And that will remove this hundred and forty thousand households from poverty for life. That's the kind of empowerment we are doing for the poorest of the poor. Oburi gave a five-kg bag of rice. And, uh, uh-huh, my brother, the governor of Abia has just come. Because, Tom, you, ote, tono, ote, tono, ote, tono, ote, ba, because. Ugware. No, 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 thank you very much, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Anambra kueno? Anambra muano? Ibo kuensueno? Uh-huh. Gerunde nanka, onuke chelo, no, onuke je je, chow somewhere by the side, because you are blocking others. Uh-huh, either you come forward in front here, so you don't block, um, number da, if you came with Ugware, he is safe here. I'm his bodyguard here. Ugware, you are welcome. Akamusilo kuwa a moment ago, I see the National Economic Council meeting. When I agree about this town hall meeting, where Sam, Sam Delia the address, that he might stop by in the course of this event. And I want to thank you immensely, Ugware. A moment ago, omalefengu about the future of the southeast, Akuia? Eh, buluna that with the crop of governors, aim we kita, and the southeast, if we collaborate together and work together in a farm that I believe that we ought to, and which, and that we must, that will change the story, the narrative of the southeast. Akuifengu eba a moment ago. Ugumba, you are welcome. Ugware. Ugware, nugu Ugware. Omwe me le elect, eh, declare, eh, anya wina, man, achineka is a ni bo man. Yes. Tana, eh, negide Abia, negide Abia, negide, na ma jo, again in a me. Eh? Yes? Okay, oh, yeah, na remind him, no, guy, my transition committee, uh, my, okay, transition committee, he actually chaired, I think, the economic, uh, 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 intersection of the transition committee. Thank you very much, Ugware. And with you and Abia, I think, like I said, we're convinced nachineka, boku na ni bo man. It signals, no, gay, logo. We can continue, I mean, this wandering in the wilderness. It is now time to look to the east. The sun rises from the east, bo. But I abia zila, eh, odeka, omwe kemen, but I got them, ma. So, the ifa in a book, and I want to end it this way. I am welcome, I am, I'm, 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 to question and answer session. We are now acquiring, uh, we've got the data, the land banks, acquiring lands for various developments, we're not, 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 not there. Also, in a book, Bona, the reforms, I in a man at the land registry, for such that you can now perfect your mortgages, it transfer titles within. Okay. Our target currently, each agency of, oh, me menka, each and the title and so on, used to take like months, six months, one year, whatever. It's now down to seven days, and our target is seventy-two hours. Our target is seventy-two hours. We're now implementing the GIS, they are computerizing the land registry, and soon you will be anywhere in the world, and we'll be able to access and verify, and so on. It might because land is Anambra's own platinum. Land grabbing boy, big business. Bo, but I get there. We put that, three, four persons, actually one title, not barely. Na no go. It will end. On our governance, uh, the environment, I don't want to dwell much on governance and the others, but on environment, eh, baga choli end. Eh, remind in there, Anambra, that our number one existential threat toward the environment, flooding and erosion. We now have a draft bill, I send to the House of Assembly to rescue our environment. Unyo obu na omwe li, for ge me. Afugam doctor Harry eba. Ayon na befa ne benato. Ga no gida le, eh, ba, senam, uh, golly erosion, eh, pocha kalo e benato. Uh, ozo, ke walo, e benato, no su meji. I also, if I, I go celeba. Yes. Many communities are sliding. Oko, nanka, obo, uh, amo apala, e kulo abia. Well, erosion everywhere, now oba, oba kugo bon. Bo, he ke, obata go kugo bon. Webbya koli ilona ekefe. So, we are, we are not, we are not, we are not taking this very, we have been ruthless about this because we must rescue that city. Onisha has died, but we are going to rescue Onisha back. Today, we have opened back the waterways, back to River Niger. And now, Wangene, we reclaimed a large expanse of land around Wangene. Which people had taken over and taken, and, oh my god, and built up everywhere in a very filthy manner. But we have opened it up back to River Niger, so that drains. Ona bo milizo, nde madna, wo se no Onisha. We entered Urban Boy Secondary School, and the only speech they met to us that day, they pleaded with us, they thanked us, that na, I ne me, eh, sipa drainage is no Onisha. That three of their students died three years ago because it rained, flood. Three staff, young staff of UBA, were killed by flood, no Onisha, two, three years ago. Fabasalolo, Banyana Moto, one of them, Kafanazie, Obuna Milizo, omwe de bem Milinaga. And the flood everywhere, the speed and the intensity of the flood, bo motova, bo motova, they got into a ditch and got drowned there. Onisha literally died. Unyo obu na na lokasi fe ne, and because Onisha died, we died and then resurrected Nasaba. They died and resurrected Nasaba. Unyo obu na, they move to Asaba. I can tell you, we have it as a major project, we are going to rescue Onisha, and we are rescuing Onisha. Part of our environmental law is not just to de-silt and clean up, we are rebuilding the infrastructure on Asia. We're rebuilding. The towns took over the place. Now we are peeling them, we are now raising quite an army now, we're recruiting quite some, uh, dead devil's security people, whom we are going to now implant from Upi Waka to Gajunshan, to Head Bridge, to down to, uh, Ochanja and main market areas, all those places that these towns operate, we are now going to implant and have steady teams there, to take them out any minute of the day. And meanwhile, we are rebuilding the infrastructure, the roads again. I'm not among them, I look forget before. When they might be forget it? Eh? Yeah. Forget, we are rebuilding it, the entire, uh, Zika Avenue. We're now dualizing it and making it multiple lanes up to Ochanja, to Ozomagana. Get passing through Ochanja, round about, Ochanja, round about, we have a waterfall. And then from Moore Street to Ochanja again, to Upi Waka. Then from there, you get into, um, Potacot Street, from Potacot Street to Misselands. Then on Creek Road, Creek Road dualized and put up all of them with their dual carriage and with, uh, uh, street lights and so on and so forth. Creek Road then to Silas Walks up onto the express. We are doing, we've awarded them, and by this Mamba month, you will see the difference in those places. And part of our environmental law would then compel landlords even to begin to repaint their buildings once every while. Specified. But if I turn on the channel, some of these buildings are not so easy. We are cleaning, we are making it green, and we will turn it back again a livable place. But when we are rescuing Onisha, we are rebuilding other places to begin to grow. Anambra got them, man. I brought by choice, cow, my sorry, my sorry, Anambra got them, man. And the world will come. But here is the big news, I mean, the thing, I close this web. What do you have to do? How do you contribute? Who know, I'm willing for game, man? It's not everybody that can come and make investments and build factories and so on. The other day, I opened a steel mill, a steel factory. I've never been, I'm a manufacturer, rocks and so on and so forth, no, cuz of. And it's owned predominantly by a new member of the Anambra State House of Assembly. Who went to commission it? And it's ongoing. And several others are calling me, they can get, they get, maybe, where their factories and so on and so forth. I know Christian, who did to go the commissioner for industries, he has a lineup of them, dying again, maybe, where their factories and so on. One say, now, Abia to Anambra to invest. He talk, I'm over your PA. Guam, in our, but on our airport, I'm, yeah, bluey. I love, I give PA, provided, they get away on our number. Once, yeah, Abia, he, he goes around, I for, I know, I'm, if he, yeah, Abia. Once, I'm for, I'm, if he, yeah, Abia.
Eh biya kute governor, ma governmenta, senior ego, senior go tego taxi va to give you. Eh manaya me me. Man ebia xika iwo ma ke tuage si control that erosion, ma etuage si manka, manka ge meva. That's what keeps us awake. We're not going to take the money I collected from the na nyakke kenapek to get to Ija ba mm wale ya ba Ija ba kalokalo. No. We must account for every penny that is put in our pants. And with us there, we ask you, trust us with your penny. And if we misuse it, hold us to account. If we misuse it, hold us to account. That is the message I ne nyono. But don yo abona wa lungo galo. What are you doing yourself? What are you doing yourself? To turn the story, to change the narrative by... Oh, wo la nyamflebebe. Or ochi da odenkalo. Profesor odenkalo, eh? Oh, yeah, eh? I can see where you go. Oh, Prof. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Eh ma, when we're talking about law, security and order, uh, se- uh, security, law and order. You know that that's part of the response to the massive insecurity everywhere in the southeast and Anambra particularly. We set up this through Justice and Peace Commission, which Professor Odenkalo has graciously agreed to cheer. And that commission is doing an amazing job. Is doing an amazing job. Um, I think, um, the one of your recommendations, which I've already, we've already started implementing. I think I saw a memo from the Attorney General about if I need now to equip the office and so on and so forth. What they recommended for us to establish bureau of missing persons. Maybe in that, in that bureau, uh, the list will be quite long. Including Abba Simalo, my co-contestant as governorship candidate, who is just missing. And then we go to a point, no nyan, oh, me is le, oh, bo lo just, you get on to do your thing. Nobody cares and that's gone. No. We will now care and we will never forget. And we will never forget. So thank you very much, Prof, uh, for the work that you are doing. They have been having public hearings and so on. And many things coming off from different communities and so on and so forth. I want to say to you, dear friends, thank you for coming once more. To my brothers, I want to end with my brothers. Um, whom I bonine, uh, that's in his typical way, you know? Come and dead out here. I appreciate the comments that you made. I'm sure we're going to open the floor to the others. I deeply appreciate you all. Um, eh bo be chukuzo, my own senator. Uh huh, senator kem. Uh huh, eh ma, I am very excited, what do you say? Everybody says, ah, gena mm senator ka, ona, adi ko wa li fe mm, ono, awalo, no awalo, even in sa. He is my senator. Mo abolo governor, eh? We need to walk together to make the place to walk. We need to walk together. Obu obunatalo, uh, street lights. I think that was, uh, was that December or January? There about. Ona aga flag ya off, nan ne we. Oh, me invite to come and flag them off. Ana, onya edemwe ba, onya edenke ba, aso yemba, niwe je, ai, mo kano, oh, opposite party, opposition. Opposition party. Ni eje, awolu ne me indos. Na eh manka, man. So be good. And I'm coming back to say, I, I mean, I don't just say it. I live by it. Oh no, manama dam. Ah, wo berampa, awalo de politician, march or able. Politician, unkena, who five size of the mouth. You know, I say it as it is. And for me, what you see is what you get. I told them, I've told you here now, no football came where. And that ball projector Anambra. And that irrespective of political party, irrespective of anything, once he ne wonata something to Anambra, call me, I will come. Obulunka, eh, biya buluna abuja, ayahaya moto, biya bulie. Mea buluzie, enka e bu nata, bu nati onoi, sim no, no na mm. Ono na party enka, mona party enka. Nevunno, totu was here, akane, kune, hey, ogar, you going, sa, biya mokem line na mota me jeba. And I was there and commanded him and encouraged others to do like him. Eh bo be chukuzo. That is my own brand of politics. That is my own brand of politics is projector Anambra. Project Anambra, that's nothing, merah, party fa au vehiko, idwelewe ba. Thank you very much. Oze, eh, ohamadike, uh, gawa hamadiken kem. Asemi ya no, um, omwe goesime, biya, omeh biya, biya, ayanrom, oh, omera, otra fi kaidro, me overtake. So. I, I, my, my, I tell no, no, otra fi kaidro, me overtake ebene. Managwa me ebas, sa, awalo basi mu ne ya phone, sa, no, eh, ogar de me campaign, sa, no, eme sa, amam. Ay ma nyala lo, manke na lena. Uh, nanka eh ba, oje feri ba au, omwe ka de, eh ma, omwe ki ne, je je, moto imwe ko, me ko, ko se, osi ke, abo je lugu de ba. Feto motozo, obagozo, se driver ya, bu gotezi ya moti ebene. Moto ya, aja lugu de ya fa ba, iwa na moto ya. Eh? Eh? Eh, no even ne, eh, no ya, eh ma, adema. Adema, no, akane me campaign, umba, ne, eme sa, iwa lo, eh, ya, no tava zia, no tava? No tava? No tava? No tava? No tava? Eh ba, eh ba, eh ba, eh ba, eje, eh ba. Eh, awakro, you no go walking. Of, uh, ayaka? Ayakan sube? Oh, yimbo bo? Eh? Oh, yimbo? Oh, yimba ayaka? Ifa me no bo da? Onya ke au bo, oh, oh, yimbo bo ka e bo? Omera, ikuku kusia, 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 kusia. Eh, eh manam, onya choli pa pozo, sena, ne uku loli ya, nu kuanya. Ne uku elo ya, nu kuanya. Manah, ayaka? Eh, eje na sena, mm, aké buchonwa de la, de la atikolebe, no, no, onya ki eje zele, manka. Rapu ifa, eme sa, ayaba, ay maye be no. Ay maye be no. Rapu no na, aké buchonwa de la, tamo de la atikolebe. Eh? Ogara de summa? Eh? Apa ayaka? Apa ayaka? Ogara join? Oh, no ya join? Eh? Oh, ki no tina, eh? Yimbo kiwa? Ha! Ma ene go ma nya? Ene go ma nya fa, ene go ma nya, even in ne deba? Eh, ona, 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 agwa maka, mm, ona agwa maka uguero. Ma uguero, ma nyangwa wa hamadikeo, uh, oma, famo ebefasi bidu. Uh, famo ebefasi we bidu. And they all have home. Mwabakonoseala, mwabakota, they are all going to return to their home. And we are waiting with a red carpet, with a red carpet, ne jeba, ino chea ta no no ba, ebefasi. I want to thank all of you immensely and to say, I the very open, man, I want apology, that's where I end. Omalo, eh, eh, so, omwe, eh, man ya, oboso, sena, pokatange. Eh, zaro. Go see my phone. Like, since so to to tata, afu beronmfo na ya. Eh, the tem, waba, mm, council meeting, from council meeting, waba, otaweba. I'm yet to see man. So, onya na pom, since so to toa. Omaleko, opo three times, oh, sena, opo go mea five times, opo re peak. The assumption, moni di phone, o gi ne, kiliya na ke ba. Ne, 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 call eh, fokali, eh, opo re peak ya. Man, ogotarani, ke kwe, all through the day, you haven't even see your phone. So, eh, onya, obona, oza, eh, peak ro. Well, Monday. Bopamo gozo, ma send their text. Ke kwe, game, lem, fuya, eh, peak, eh, me. Ine fu na phone, ma, wo ne, wetela. It's about seventeen thousand something, ordinary text, eh, me, eh, me. Obuluzie, enka WhatsApp, because everyone one phone. Enka WhatsApp, every two hours, you have over two thousand that come in. So, eh, me get a phone, manah, hang every time. So, my apologies to all of you. Ma obolo na, isendelo, ma wo no, awakro. Manah, in summary, Anambra, ga demma. Anibo, ga demma. Ma solova, ma solova. And the time for you to be there is now, not tomorrow, because tomorrow might be too late. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Biko, ana kopa ma ke ba. Ana kopa ke ba. Biko. Ah, juju ba, eh, dabane. Contributions. Chief Sir Ariza.
Eh, biko, ganonti, eh, ede tugo questions over hundred. Ina ya na table, eh, no, no dinana, no dinana, Mr. Governor, si ko opango, kosa juja da juja. Ina ya na table, eh, no, everyone who will hear there for questions, suggestions and contributions. Eh, de tu go, oh, tu go eh tu. Ina ya na file, ede ba na table, Mr. Governor. Oto akai si na file, base of snee na ju. Man, kosa godin ka ma do five. Ike, wo no my prefer, onya, distinguish sinetou, che, kunife, ko po.
Biko. Uh, Mr. Governor. Glamo ka ebi doberu na the former governor of Anambra State. Biko, oma? Biko ka ebi doba oma? Yes.
Yeah. All the, all the disrespectful to the rest.
Biko no, no dinana.
Obu ne, choli, eh, poa, eh, poa, eh, but don't start disrupting the event, eh, ke na, eh, ke na.
Biko no, onya deznebe se picture, onya deznebe ke ne. Onwa, biko go.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Morva, Makon, no de la ne. And you are behaving very well. We'll soon wrap up, because I know my food, my fa na sa, we ebene. Ona fa joy. Thank you.
Uh, Your Excellency, the Governor of Anambra State, Mr. Governor. Professor Chukumansoludo. Wambafu. Chairman, si niwa kukui bo. Onya, you la kukui bo. Uh, Chairman of Education. Distinguished Senators. Uh, Past and Present. Members of House of Representatives. Same, Past and Present. Honorable Commissioners and members of Anambra State Executive Council. Former Ministers, if any here. As in former ministers, so when you're doing, not, not here, and they go minister. In the traditional rulers, yeah, ni we. Ni ze. Ni sindoka, religious leaders. Almeke, no nyabona. Biko, unko eh chi, niye ze, niye oh. Ayana te gakan. Eh ba. Chairman, no po po, within the senators. Before Governor, eh, be poe. Kita obuka juha juju. Tiyo benalo. Vamdeka, niye walo. Eh, mano, eh, bo, madoso, eh, si, eh, ni ga, ke, eh, wompa ba ya, eh? Oh, de, ba, ke, eh, wompa ba ya, na business. Eh, ba go ne, go out, oh, go in equality road. Sena even ni bishop, oh, gali, eh? Aboko san ni bishop, ne, poe oh. Uh huh. Man, ka dosros ba, for na ya, eh, boy, da, all seventeen years old. Without maintenance. Without maintenance. So for me. Eh, benge, eh, be de go de bo na. Na, you go de ni bo, those rose, mm, ke, ni ge rose, ah. They are anti-erosion roads. Fatang were drains. Eje na ya, eh, fu na fa na, abo, po, eh, le. Former Governor, san, san, la, kanan, rapia like that. Ka wa na, na ro do, ke, ne, maybe, eh, maybe. So, biko. Tiye road maintenance agency, eh, ba, mi, we go. Niye fo bele fond. Ka fe je na, eh, me chi, these roads. Man, go, my small crata. Obu ne, de zirea. With five naira. One naira, you need a ten naira, eh, you eh, me zire. One na one naira, you need a one million. To resurface, scrape and resurface those areas. Ka, blunk is, the road maintenance agency. Number two. Youth empowerment. Entrepreneurship. Skill for youth. I may believe in the fact that, nah, if I had to associate toward the, my, eh, je, ah, kukua. My, eh, je, la, fu, na, na, university. Eh, ye, oh, no, eh, wetela, let oh, no. Ni USC, ni Glasgow, ni Abbott, ana zone, ni pharmacist. Ana zone, niye, tiye, niye, asta wa ke, bu ya moto. Ya first month, eh, be de la oh, no. Ordinato ata ata, umba. So. Eh? Oku ko, eh, 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 fe na fele, eh, bele, eh, be. Din tawari ageni, after that. I gainya, our children's skills. How do we do that? Obu, professor, see, low skill at business centers. Yes, it's part of it. Man, I gainya change the curriculum of education. Governor. Eh, be de ba, me, ambe no, manam, um, puziava, jettisina, eh? Omua with the idea of secondary technical, na Anambra State. Yes. So, omuaka ba secondary school. Fa, mota ke si, ah, kwa, kwa. Mota ke si, eh, me, painting. Mota ke si, niyo, why, mota ke si, eh, ke si, those here, eh, see, and other things, this year. Ah, moti eh? Endo laka? Eh, governor, eh, went now. Omua ina, go, go, my, my wife, no ta, go, me, go, lo, di, ah, kwa, kwa, buka, meti. Ana kwa, kwa, now, ofa, kwa, fifty thousand, twenty thousand, eh, ga, kwa, kwa. Thirty, fifty. What depend, oh, dea, kwan? Oh, eh, ba, ku, now. Na, na, kwa, ke, fifty thousand. Seventy five. So, why, eh, why, eh, ma, kuzi, omuaka, no, mo, eh, ina school, ofa ke si, ah, kwa, kwa. Ka, bo, no skill acquisition. Man, a commission of education, eh, gananani. With Commissioner for Youth and Sports and Entrepreneurship, une, je, ne, ya, ya, ah, na, fede, executive council. Anu katago, no, go de tim, de tim, no, kalia, umba, zanke. Minister for Education, si ne, outta revenue. Man, education, the concurrent list. So, nobody can come and dictate Anambra what to do with their schools. Chukue, eh, la, ya, ka, omua ina, bata face, nan ko, go, go, si. Jam. Wa ek. And common entrance. First, first, ne bo. So, eh, ti, bu, ele, van, kano, eh, onya juja, eh, ku, omu, de ni bo. Politically, uh, amaro me ba, eh, ma, eh, ma, kunka. Ni na ba, ma kunka. Porro ni eh? Nke e bo, eh? Nke ton? Oh, sorry, Governor, gumba, uh, eh, ke ne, kwa, mo, oh, eh, enka, eh, ke bo. Governor. Even in eh, kuse si, eh, ba, bu, eh, go. Anma fea, oh, here, oh. Programmer. Eh, me seventy percent. Eh, de na, choose, Governor, Anambra State, eh, wo go problem. In fact, eh, wo, ne, ga, Governor, na, to, eh, wo, kuti immediately. I'm telling you the truth. Man, eh, go, ki, ge, di, well, eh, eh, go, di, oh, no. So, mu, eh, go, na, yo, eh, program, eh, draw, oh. Yes. And, eh, agme, anya, ya, leta. Man, ke, ka, chanke, onya, ne, kwenye, konya, bu. National Assembly, eh. Eh, we, eh, so, tal, ya, bu, na, ba, na, ben, eh, na, bu, ke, niye, man, ka, na, di, da, be federation. And in the sinetos, ah, my joy, bo, na, fat, janine, starting from, eh, niye, niye, ya, wa. Ona, mm, with the national budget, ne, 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 mbambo minister. So, ah, wo, na, kana, ah, wo. Man, ka, niye, ade, bu, ko, oki, Anambra, eh? Okay, constituency, eh, especially, oh, nya. Maybe, si, eh, tota, ni, wo eh? Maybe, the more Brazil, eh, as of rep. Oh, eh, si, outside, eh, be, eh, wa, ni, fe, de. Mm, mm, jan, go, eh, mfu, eh, ndapna. But, oh, do, omuaka, ka, icho, eh, moto. Oh, do, niye, ka, icho, ke, ba, bo, lo, omua eh. Omua eh, je, no, bo, fazo, tiven, ke, ba, bo, ya, na, na, ta. Governor, omu, eh, no, zire, ba, no, ne, omu, ro, no, na, Anambra State. Oh, ya, omi, bu, bu, de, eh, di, here. Environment. Bou flood, do, mom, milliput, tuna, bam bam, ki, na, channel, eh, even in, eh? Ya, cho la, eh, Environmental Fund. Be la, eh, ina, ro, no, na, Anambra State, eh, ga, na, pu, every year. Ki, eh, na, channel, eh, de, me, fe, na. Keep on going from it. Ona, mm, ona, eh, ma, kasino, bro, eh, ba, eh, na, eh, na, pu, property tax. Everywhere, man, Lego's property tax. Niye, property tax, na, Anambra State, ki, eh, mo, de, some money. So, ah, a very many to add, eh?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, yes, adema. Anambra, kueno! Biko, just hold on one second. Uguero, the Governor of Abia State. Doctor Alex Otte. As a co, can I, just, eh, um. I don't know, go, when, look, oh, sem, ne, aga, oh, sem, that he was going to peep in for ten minutes. Manam, Odenko, no, ka, oh, no, Uguero, no.
Oh, kusia, eh, young, um. Anambra, kueno! Kueno! Kuenzo, no! Um, Your Excellency. Professor Chukumansoludo. Na, onya, no ni. Um. Let me stand on other existing protocols. Man, ka, ni, ma, de, rike ba. Mani, chiri, eh, chichi. Mani, na, ku, du, eh, chi. Mani, marila retirement. Biko. Hasn't come here, eh, lo. Kuado, kano. One day, wo ke. Oh, Professor Soludo. Muaka, oh, muaka, na, mu, alo. Just a few days, or a few weeks. And, um, I'm learning from him. Like he said, I participated in a transition committee, eh? Over a year ago, as the Chairman of the Economic Transformation Subcommittee of the AB, Equally Led Transition Committee. And, uh, it was supposed to be for six weeks. I think it ran for eight weeks. And, uh, like he always said, we paid to serve. Anambra is still owing me, because even my hotel views, I paid. But, um. I want to say that Alibu cannot develop without Anambra. And anyhow, you flip and dice it. Anambra might be in the lead, others will follow. Oh, when you go, eh, shoe, eh, fu. The major reason that made, I'm not a politician, just like him. Maybe he's a better politician than me. The major reason I came into politics was Abah. Because as a bank MD, I sat and I see, I give somebody one million. He would return the money with thank you. He'll keep the thank you, just return the money, many, go, oh, ni, oh, so. And when you look at the Abah business people. A lot of them, won't be in Anambra. And I felt that, um, it was time for me to come and demonstrate it in Abia State. That's why I came into politics. And I must thank Anandambrasun, who is here. Who gave me all the support. Yesterday was his birthday. Hamandike, in Debo. Senator Victor, eh? Take a bow. When I came in twenty fourteen. He said, you run this election through Abga. I came to PDP. He said, they will not give you ticket. And it happened. Even though they've, some people had bought forms and all that, he still kept the place open. And I ran the election in twenty fourteen, warning, but it's a story for another day. The reason I came here is to support my elder brother. My senior, eh, manah, and eh, apprentice. Eh, na, kowa, boy. We, kwan, eh, uku, oh, ye, oh, no, uku, muwa, oh, wa, boy. So, I thought I should show face here and I'm very amazed that everybody is here. Sir, Emeka Ofo is also here. They talked about EEDC, they didn't want to call his name, he's the one. Since twenty fourteen, when I came out to contest. Nga kwa, he will carry a lot of money and give me. So, sometimes I wonder why he's giving me money, why he's supporting me, oh, oh, nyapiya. Even this twenty twenty-three, eh, go, eh, ina, this election. Sahi, God will bless you. You know, there's nothing that's not in Anambra. Professor Tidi Odenkalo. God bless you. For the work you are doing for humanity. Eh, kalian, Anambra. You are now doing for the rest of us. God will continue to bless you. You and I have not sat like this. But there are a lot of things you have done that helped me. The bottom line for me is that we are all one and the same people.
With the participation of the citizens. See it, say it. Even when they give Bo Nyo Rebo kidnapped, reports to their appropriate authority. Because they don't know the new. Also, I didn't even want to. So if I need a first step of conventional. So I'm not waiting until the citizens, they play their own role to support the government. But today we have a governor that is doing well, finally. So you know, I'm not going to see that solo that day, more of my boy, and I did that number. I'm an number almost every weekend. It got enough. What can I do? I can run a four in half within three months of Soludo's government, five for how many years? It got what time? Everywhere will you start from? He has done well. He's doing very well. And now that I didn't mind, I ain't just support it, yeah? I then I guess I in a. My guy supports the governor, say I support it two times, so I'll be. Uh twenty, twenty-five in the Gazzano. We are practicing constitutional democracy. And in practicing constitutional democracy, every political party will have their own candidate. That is the fact. And that is the truth. I know how much a candidate are, the other things will not come to play, but for me. Okay, don't go to politics now, couple. Lower number states. My number, but I need you. And I seen I go, only one of them are more Fuma, he had Jaquín Gold will give him work. So Soludo. He's doing well. He has done well, he's also doing more and I know fear. So because then I can free her, I look at her number, they get zero, no, no, nothing. Like I'm for the number, I prefer her, no, not to the near for lying. Can move a fly on any more Fuma. And the chip may be like, oh, so, 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 Melona, God. Never a can name on.
Your excellency, Odeanibo. My governor. Your excellency. The governor of Abia. The prime man. Chief Alex Otte. Uh um. Distinguished senators. Members of House of Lords. All the National Assembly members. And State Assembly who are here. I salute you. You're number a can name on. You're number a can name on. I'm number a can name on. Um. Who people moto. Who does we have, oh, good time. You can't visit my phone. Odeanibo. People could do it, yeah? You can't pour them, but I know what I mean. I'm going to stand there, then get out. Odeanibo, okay, then again. Um. You buy. Oh, I look, who does we have, oh, boom. Eh, but I need. Come now, watch him. Only a more. But. When I'm on the bed, mother. And you see, you know. Yeah, coach, whoever. No more, I put it talk about for in Nogalaga. Where we're in the bar. No more, I'm back. No, but also. Go, Maka, I want to find you a book. Send theibo. Land of Bono. Ndibo, land of Bono. Oh, you know, oh, you know, my legos, we prove, oh, oh. Well, I see. Yes, in the legos. We're showing you, bro, not your boat. Oh, I'm glad, yeah. There is a couple of them, really. Oh, where did I go? I India, or, or, I am, oh, eh, 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 guys, well, yeah. You buy. You buy. Be cool. Sit here, sit here, was all by. Chair, she know. Oh, put in them, you buy. Well, I could, oh, but. We're doing a number. Nebu. Now, I would have found. He would, uh. Business that buy. Now, I did, yeah, ha, na. Oh, if you keep going. In case, uh, uh, well, Royal University. You have a university. They will bring away, Jay Number. Well, yeah, I know, I need a woman, I need a. Play, who, what they call. We're seeing, I know, okay, no. He had a university. But when a university, nah, nah, me. Oh, but I'm paying, I will ten, ten, uh, me. One million. Call ya, near, 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 pretty fast, either. Don't do much. Also, maybe, can, eh. Yeah, yeah, yeah. John, I buy, I'm a number, yeah, yeah. Now, John, I look, yeah, yeah. John, I bought it, I would, yeah, I bought it, eh, we see, eh, okay, the four, okay, the story, yeah, yeah, well, I need. No, I'm not, ah. Be cool. Oh, it's a good take over. Man, I hope it's a moto. Oh, to go, I miss, we have, okay, yeah. Me, what, Danny, don't tell. Oh, nah. Oh, I'm a boy, Tom. Oh, we see, no, for, we take a, yeah, we're more, ah, for. You're a certificate of occupancy. Because I'm buying. Think home, I did, I buy. Oh, three, four, so, yeah, yeah, you buy, getting, yeah, you show me. New, yeah, I buy. Eh, don't, I can, oh, but. Go, security. Oh, yeah, I did, eh, eh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Eh, please. See, but you need them, medium, medium. Eh, 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 but they got, John, yeah, John. I'm going to tell. Oh, there, who's, yeah, oh. When you say, hey, so. Uh, uh, don't do. What, no, what you see. Uh, uh, as you have been. On the label. Eh, whether I do, I do, I don't care. Yeah, security is very important, nah. Anything, but, uh, eh, eh, change, eh, it was a development. And they don't know, but it, ah. One of the problems, eh, more, nah. All the. Nah, nah, number state. Most of the. Police stations. Have, have, also. Eh, you, eh, but I'm the police, happy, nah, 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 number. I'm also. Me, see, you, Peter. Over this, I'm number alone, the whole of Southeast. Most of the police stations have been brought down. I say, big, a big. Cost. To rebuild them. Ah, ah, by Chinese, oh, oh, more, I don't care. When you. I buy, oh, oh. If one, I'm okay. Eh, this, eh, eh, this, oh. General, yeah, and I'm okay, also, so. Take that, which I got, which I got, eh, 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 who was the digital. So, uh. Security is very important. Now. The, eh, we collapse all the police stations. Into area offices. To the fact that, that. Oh, no, I, me, I, any uniformed police, he got, oh, whatever, he got, the police. It is very bad, as, as of today. Oh, but then, you know. Police. Or anarchy. Therefore. Odeanibo. Okay, I don't know. You work in synergy. You work in synergy. With anything. Governor, eh, in one day, also, I don't think happy when you said. That you are. The worker. Together. If a person, uh, uh, security, no single state can do it alone. In Finland, no single local government can do it alone. No town can do it alone. It's all, there must be a synergy. Between the. Uh, five. Governors of the, of the, of, of, of Southeast to work together. Therefore, I am calling, I, I believe. Okay, I don't know. You discuss with the. Five governors. Eh, Jeff, who. The. Is for the general police. Serious tough one. All the police in their stations. And. I rebuild their, the positions. Provide their arms and ammunition. So the police will go back to their stations and work. They, they might, otherwise, they have to problem. Now, one, 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 one more thing, just. Um. Here. In a number state, in, actually, in a, eh, in Abuja. Indeed, a number. Not Abuja. I'm a law together. Oh, my, eh, my, which I, I go, a number state. Public officers and elders forum. In a, yeah. Okay, I don't want, you never, yeah, yeah, my, I don't, yeah, yeah, yeah. If, nah, you're number, I'm a, what, it, it, no, I'll, it, it, eh. And I, I will, I will, which I, I will, I will, make, I am, I, yeah, to see, oh, no, dear. And. I mean, eh, eh, go, look, a project. You buy, eh, no, 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 it, it, eh, I'm a. I need, eh, eh, yeah, 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 eh, 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 go, now, budget, next, a number. Do I, if you push it, you try, but you, you don't, you do, I'm back. A number state. Public officers and elders forum. One of the. Project, I, you know, why, you want, to see that, nah, a number state. Were a good project in the federal, nah, uh, federal project. Yes, so, I, what I don't want. But. Association, because, thank you. Finally, finally, finally. Um, oh, my, oh. Oh, my, eh, building. Uh, a number, one number state, where. In a general. Labor house. Oh, my, a building, they are completed. All the Logan K. Uh, his excellency. Uh. Governor. Peter Obi. Near number state, others, and. Uh, public officers and elders forum, they, yeah, oh, oh, we see, eh, because, um, I, they, eh, eh. Only a man, he, yeah, eh. Unfortunately, that building is still like that, today. She's where, the only building. In a federal states that have ever built, because. Odeanibo, never, eh, eh, thank you, thank you very much. Because, Senator. Um. A number, bueno. Eh, get on the, the, mona, fast, okay, no, be a fan. Oh, my, oh. For those of you. Hello. Oh, no, I didn't even know. Oh, the ma, my, gonna, and they, they, mona, for, for my, some of our commissioners. They don't okay, need it to interface with. Of course. Um, oh, my, the head of, eh, the mission, the, the liaison, um, the head of the liaison office. Get here, get over.
Call, call, I know, please, come. Call, I know, come fast, please.
Get on this, okay, they, they, be a leave, ah, get on the. I don't know, don't know if the state can, eh, yeah, come on. Um. Oh, no, I, eh, oh, no, I, even, eh, who. Ne, be a, get a, eh, eh, no, get a, or commissioner for information is here. The head of IRS. The Anamra Internal, eh, Internal Revenue Service. Doctor Greg Ezilo is here. Professor Mucha is the body commissioner for, uh, lands. Getting out, yeah, never. Now, never.
Because I, but you, we, yeah, can, because, so, people will see you. Because if you leave, eh, 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 please.
Yes. Um. Oh, nah, I say, oh, no, but I know, so, I can, but, for, the, but, yeah, eh, eh. Uh huh. Oh, I forgot, the commissioner for information, and he said, eh, eh, when he, eh, yeah, eh. Uh huh, nah, eh, chairman, acting chairman, eh, eh, Internal Revenue Service. Eh, Doctor Greg Ezilo. Then you have Professor, eh, of what's a Mucha, eh. Okay? Um, you have, eh, Barista Pat, eh, eh, we begin. Eh, transport. Eh, transport. Then you have, eh, Doctor, nah, does he, Godwin. Eh, now, I'm my advisor on pharmaceuticals and medicals. Then you have, eh, you have, eh, Chimwe Okoli. Ramind, eh, glam, or, nah, eh, I can't, eh, but. Eh, Chimwe Okoli. Body advisor on innovation and business incubation. And then, of course, you have my principal, eh, the principal secretary. Um. To the government. Eh, Barista, Aneto. Then you have, um, Chief, eh, Chike Anyono. Who is the MD Housing Corporation. And then, um. Uh huh. So, me, Chukung, eh, eh, is a advisor, my legal advisor. And, um. Oh, uh huh. Chairman, I, eh, is a budget, is. Oh, yeah, no, yeah, I, quack, eh. Okay. No, that's all right. Then, eh, you have, eh, Doctor Foster. Um. He had your fault. Doctor Foster is the medical doctor, ton, eh, farmer. Eh, as it were. You have, um, Mark Okoye Junior. Mark Okoye Junior is the MD of, um, Ansepa. Anamra State Investment Promotion and Protection Agency. Yeah, my, the managing director, so. Eh, I try to make investment in Anamra. Where you need partnership with the state government. You've got to talk to that office. Then you have, eh, CFA Abata. Eh, who is the managing director of our ICT agency. Um, then you have, eh, Christian, um, Udetugu. Christian Udetugu is a commissioner for industry. Uh huh. Commissioner for industry, yes. Eh? I didn't, eh, we, eh, I didn't, eh, we, didn't, eh, we, nah, eh, here, eh, eh. Uh huh, Christian, eh, Aburime. Christian Aburime is a, um, Chief Press, eh, eh, Chief Press Secretary. Uh. And then, eh, Colle Anyoko is the head of mission, eh, the liaison office. And then, eh, Shadrak. Eh, Oglora. Eh, I, I, oh, no, oh, no, fully, I'll, no, 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 eh, eh. Eh, glamour, so, put it. Think also. Glamour, eh, is the chief, eh, eh, state chief, eh, of protocol. Deputy chief of staff. Double chief, that's not double chief. Yeah. Now, oh, any of them, anybody, eh, eh, and they totally forgot, any officers, please. Feel free, um, to see any of them while we are here and, um. Uh, interact with them, get their contacts and makes it easier. But like I said. Here in Abuja Office. We also, we're trying to get the Abuja Office to function. Almost like to have a replica. Of what we have. Back home. Now, at the Abuja Office, we also have. Some others, what are the, what are the other members of the, um, Abuja Liaison Office? Eh, team. Um, I think, oh, no, bah, oh, no, bah, was there? Oh, no, bah, I can. Get on the, also. Uh huh, Abi Okubane, go. Uh. Get over. I think, I, 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 I think, I, our team, oh, a team of, eh. Beijing. Beijing, uh, Beijing, uh, Narodiva, completely. Uh huh. Okay. Mba. Oh, dear, mba. Equator. Barista Equator. Eh, but, eh, eh, eh. What, nah, nah, what, Nacho Baristan, cause of Barista Equator, cause of. But no, Barista, Barista, Barista Equator, Barista Equator. Chambers. Um, the liaison office helps us with the, um. Uh, international relations, I don't know agencies. Then, um. Eh, Abi, eh, Okubane, go, helps us at the area of investment and of course, Agata Manafa. Um. Agma, I said, I'm. Oh, no, fancy, no, no, I love fancy, no. None. Thank you very much. So, I enjoy to the liaison office, I think you have a team there. Eh, to liaise with. Whatever, from, whatever you need. Nah, home government, everywhere, somebody, not at the liaison office. whom you can interface with. Oh, see, Zilang, oh, oh, eh, you, eh, eh, I, those, oh. Oh, no, I didn't even know. Okay, well, eh, so.
Uh, Mr. Governor, please.
I think, I, the next, was a, um. Rice and plenty. Rice and stew, very plenty, uh huh.
So, uh, Mr. Louise. Uh, the managing director of China Harbor Engineering Limited. Uh, investors and developers. Of, uh, one point five billion dollars. Lake Deep Sea Port, they are here. Because, eh, eh, they want to. You know, partner with Anamra State.
Now, you, you, you welcome, you come, that, Mike. Uh huh. Um. You guys have a chart. Uh huh, you begin from there. This one point five billion, you are doing there. Anamra making two billion, or, we, we manage with two billion. Fan number, I wouldn't mind, just two billion. And we'll tell you. Your return on investment. Something that you cannot imagine. You diversify your risk. And that is the place to be now. Wow, wow, okay. No, 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 you are in the right place, you are, you're, you're safe with us. Um, talking about their interest in the rail. Uh, their interest in the initial port. And their interest in the, um. Uh, dredging and, and, and so on. No, we'll talk about this dredging. Hmm. Let's talk more. Because we need to do even our inland waterways that we want to dredge. And, and, and so on. Okay? Any other one that is, um. Very key, otherwise, eh, I think, eh, just to say that rice and stew plenty.
Yes.
Um. Eh? I say. R S V P. Eh, rice and stew, very plenty. Uh huh. So. I, eh, I think it remains for me to simply thank all of you. Thank you immensely. Like I said, from time to time. Eh, everywhere, contact, everywhere, like, when we have, eh, open, eh, open house. Sessions. Like when I can come. And they want like two days, not in office, open, but anybody who can walk in. You know, walking clinic, as it were. You want to see me. I come and spend some time here. Um, as the case may be. Eh. I'm, I'm, I take, yeah, no, I'd, so, I, I'd, so, eh, yeah, about this one question.
Good evening, sir, my name is Obenji Lanya, I'm from Anamra State, Nibo Oka-Soud. I wanted to ask. The Anamra State Judicial Panel sat in twenty twenty. And the recommendations and the report from the panel is not yet made public. So I want to ask when this will be made public, because it has been, um, it has been. Sent to your office, we are aware of that, it's been in the news that it has been sent to your office. And then, number two.
Okay.
And number two. James Muafu, the former OC of SAS. Who publicly accepted that he had killed a lot of Anamra State indigens. He is still living and working in Anamra State. Although he was last employed by the Anamra State Government and sacked during the end, SAS protest. I ask because my brother was one of the victims of James Muafu. What would the Anamra State, eh, government do about this killer cop? Who is now retired and working freely in Anamra State without persecution? By the way, I have sent a petition to your office, to the liaison office. I've also written, I've also been at the panel of inquiry before. And I've also written to you several times on social media and you refused to. Oh, well, maybe you didn't say it, let me assume you didn't. So now I'm asking you to please answer me. What would happen about the report and what would happen about James Muafu? Thank you very much.
Yeah. Angel, your, your question is very well. James Muafu, to the best of my knowledge, did not work for Anamra State Government. Just. Right. James Muafu did not work, I didn't, I don't know that Jim, James Muafu was an employee of Anamra State Government. Um. Um, at least not to the best of my knowledge. Hello, can you now listing? Yes, when you ask a question, you're listing, that's part of the discipline. And then get a response. Okay. James Muafu, I don't know him, I mean, I assumed office as governor of Anamra twenty twenty-two. And since then, I don't know who James Muafu is. And I don't know, I never met him. And I don't know who he is. And I don't know him to have been an employee of Anamra State Government. That's said, first and foremost. I even understand, I don't even know that James Muafu is from Anamra, to start with. No, you, you say that he's not, okay. Otherwise, eh, we, oh, yeah, Bob, eh, 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 so. To the best of my knowledge, what I had, what I read. Is that James Muafu was supposed to have been a policeman, a police officer. That's the much I know, that's the much I read. Eh, period. And. Who is supposed to prosecute him? Is it the Anamra State Government or the police? Or the, eh, security agencies and so on? That's a different matter. Second, on your, eh, whatever, a report you said about inquiry in twenty, eh, twenty, what? Twenty? Eh? The, the prior report was written in twenty twenty-one. Uh, well, um, you said it was sent to my office. I'm yet to see the report itself, when we'll see it. We, we do the needful, um, as it were. So that is it, I mean, eh, we had a panel of inquiry, about what, by the way? Police brutality in Anamra State. Yeah. We'll say, when we'll see your report. Then we'll take, eh, I mean, my legal advisor is here. Um. When we get, eh, get the report, then we'll review it. I've got a legal advisor, I have, eh, the attorney general. They will review it and then advise us appropriately. Okay? Yeah. It's good that, eh, yes, I'm, but this one, I think, oh, my, no, oh, my, it's, no, one, one, yes, eh, very.
Your Excellency. Um, only, she, I did, eh, go, eh, oh, she, no, I'm a Fuma, did, eh, did, one, them, Chukuga, go, see, eh. Your Excellency, I got, oh, no, 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 no.
on my own contribution thank you sir
thank you uh huh I know okay I uh uh no thank you very much I am out oh I know how I was I was street like slide but that's why I fear that's why I fear of mana I align I align I street light I know we don't bother where he can street light don't worry at the minimum easy ago sorry easy ago every time easy ago every time easy ago every time easy ago don't bother come I have a child my name uh thank God all the man thank you very much um any other he can go huh he can go
Mr. Governor Mr. Governor permit me to stand on existing protocol um people will make a new one that number I can never do on you no problem I can never do Mr. Governor because I'm a make a negative preach because um only see now only on half of zone now solo more either men Anambra Monday night Monday I know he they feel here I will have a politician but um I must thank you in a special way because that's in a so Mr. Governor because uh I'm a make a negative when I see now all now a good child I near capital has something so no a man now a good job behind because I from Mumbai so many people are here are billionaires billionaires each of now this town hall meeting would have come in a better form where more interactions would take place because so many people but everyone that interaction I know my gas seminars now I guess impose you now I guess uh uh although after ten then I'm coming so because I'm a my young and when it time was on organize something like this can we better time we are stands in the Ministry of uh the tax and we standing in the um um transport and we standing in the finance and we standing in the works and we standing only then who blues or shop around to the stance get here in touch with them interact with them
thank you
for the betterment of Anambra
thank you
for instance um and a book tax which is the vital the major issue concern everywhere one owner most of our people not here everybody's in a one stop shop they buy our work or in it's a nature on tax I see by so doing they will contact in way that again
thank you
the water tax
that's a very very good suggestion
then because all the vital governor needs our money and we are ready to give him Anama Okuma tax now Anambra
wonderful
and then with a lot of investments maybe commission steel industry beside it Anama Rush fat plant integral a lot of billions yeah so I'm a my young again I don't bring a Cuba salad land since I only seventy two hours all the very important it is not here why people have confidence in buying land in Abuja on our edges now all over all the data land data are in the system you will have the person you are dealing with is it the right person so any the Anambra where such thing very very important then anyone where businesses now Anambra need the energy power I'm on now number the second largest state in well gas my very happy now only resolve what this put to do now gas I connect your gas but talk can but I know we so that people like us and we motel now can but my revenue now half of it almost all of it now Ghana power so everywhere gas we can subscribe and pay money to use them
thank you
so Mr. Governor I'm a my euro give away any in that regard
yes
when I
yes no no go on
now you go because he had been very very well in terms of road road infrastructure he got that I know where I know but they can see you care
thank you
but because they have to hasten up because I know all of them but the higher haste in the up he got that because and they will be project we get boss on our canal where
wonderful
then uh in conclusion I then he have a solid relationship uh the governor and the the National Assembly members project attraction the very very important very very important governor I'm a my euro after this town hall meeting all her on a personal grant because this season
we have already discussed this you are just you are reflecting what we have already discussed
thank you very much thank you very much now number one now number one 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 zone Governor never oh Governor see Anambra salt and even now you go now you need nebo and then Anambra gap a door of focus new group on that Governor salute dog I'm okay but look on my life and I assume no believe one is a election after the election the next day upon where I'm my support government yeah and I may have way to court and I have kept to that secondly no we're born in I give you support ever go near a many fora now only able to only of not attain on the height Governor I attend to be a pride to the bank let's take sentiment apart I don't can make go on a mal they been can not a who's in a Anambra salt and by the grace of God ever man be sure no man can't down tag to my phone even the group my momma oh only of not let us resolve to support okay now choose the election okay now choose the election I wanna salute dog he wouldn't have crashed the launch only one city he said it he gave me his paper and I'm working with his paper we have not divided diverted from all the plans and procedures I will and I'm a known good plan for the Anambra State security wise so because I support on there you have the necessary support calling me if I never go back at tax if I never go back because which I don't know mother one day I don't know social media and all these things let us just have our vision our focus to make Anambra State what we want Anambra to be thank you very much
thank you thank you ever bet you go so my own senator um because no um other than okay I can call it if they own or they'll those things uh huh I say you say would you be the aspa okay be the aspa because that's it let's pick up the rest let me because I will have to um I can yeah file is a beacon can let me just respond to this
Your Excellency
yeah
the government Anambra pain Anambra pain Anambra base on no because uh more about our rings and addo President General Anambra State um obidai you talk my killer by a argue for like a host to the governor obidai you talk okay to make a distant hall meeting and I put a bomb box I like the kid a chukuna on a gun commander Mr. Governor I have seen where can they carry the water you're doing very well we like your guts we like your confidence it takes the home boy to do the job you're doing in Anambra State I went to a car boat Abuja can't eat in Anambra State but I miss our governor by every night most darkest moment the darkest moment he was there I need connect uh even here the philosophy of I want to find the aspa Abuja here will turn our beat but the guy they table our government in Ayane Anambra State but uh it didn't come if I in West state but as I speak today I am a good good one Fernando we have an estate was doing there all have a very beautiful world
wonderful
and my efforts from people and as you speak today less than a year eighty percent have been subscribed by Indian number
wonderful
thinking of expanding it that will involve Gandhi Lagos
thank you thank you
Mr. Governor we have plans each a power no
thank you
there are so many things we want to do which reduces even the health when I talk to that wants to be cardiological centers and diabetes center
thank you
we don't need Anambra State money we just need that permission to go into healthcare centers three rooms is enough and only to build except here up it's going to be a very good one open up and we be channeling somebody to talk to
thank you
so because these are projects like there are so many other things of
thank you thank you thank you thank you thank you very much I think
I want to please Mr. Governor over here in every two years the Anambra Day cultural day I'm trying to see permission now this product or a way of showcasing our culture is a way of telling people that India number no so I've been here for the past ten years and each time we gather people I am ago um there's a message I need send you all the time
thank you I think this is the last now I want to thank all of you I told me can only open up can now no need in there for coming there will be another day that's why I do work at the um AKL papers uh on all the tables only when questions suggestions anything to suggest to us go there if of one big file every time all the happening all the suggestions and all the inputs and all the questions I pay the governor I got sort here out leave questions and suggestions I pass I to the various officers said in charge I belong to the moon agaza except the alumni among asaya I could not even the book or totally even the name all the suggestions in there taking the good faith and where I can bet you by the next time we meet we will go through several of these suggestions and you will be rest assured now we take these things and we take them I belong to the me for his and the alumni and my WhatsApp or something I forward it right away to the officer in charge my commissioner for works I think he's always on overdrive because I keep forwarding um some days I forward more than ten uh stuff to him I am here on a beer I will later when uh my easy ago on a rose of beer Mary vow who says a video who said your forward auto governor on a right now forward yeah move on going forward required to any works see a gentleman um I bought to back on one day I think today I forwarded two to him and asked him to go there and visit one of them came from Nibo only in K D but just no say she had no video ever in there we're blue yeah yeah forward I said me I just visited today and then report back to me so all I want to say to you open up we are very responsive in our pile yeah we will do the much we can within the resource constraints anywhere motor in a government would do him more with less okay doing more with getting with less the output I know where or total quest question demand now you calling all the way above a very case here with the go and you are a good father that's the question people ask me all the time in fact one of the bishops in on Anambra asked me and what I found is so in order this is quite a very interesting age even to a point of interrogating the cost of the projects interrogate there where compared here with similar projects of the past for example road projects analog with far 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 fundamentally higher levels of in terms of the the specifications but costing about the same thing are even less than much much inferior designs in the past one bishop accosted me with that he was telling me cause it well cause it well now compare it on you want to know we are get measure where a former thickness of my event and so on he was puzzling puzzled how come and I lose it man I'm now low a higher quality road at a cheaper cost well I didn't have an answer but no it was well I meant ever but all I can tell you open up our motor would do him more with less and yes the chairman mentioned it at the introduction I don't know a book about a year ago the House of Assembly approved that we could borrow a hundred billion naira to execute these capital projects because of the state of finances it was an Ambradi they approve for us to borrow a hundred billion I can tell you that from then twelve months later till date we have not borrowed one copper of the hundred billion that was approved for us we haven't because we are insisting we are insisting eh we're not just going to borrow like any other you know just never ego and when everybody likes to you know have money and spend money but we are worrying also about tomorrow we are worrying about the future we don't never want to bankrupt the state finances no prudence in managing